Your default makeup, there we go, can you hear us Judy?
Yes, I can.
All right, Bob.
Call this video of the Buckfield Select Board in order for October seventh, twenty twenty five at six thirty five P M. If you're receiving old business, old church.
Need to talk on this?
Sure.
Um, so we attended an online meeting with me and a preservation earlier today. Um, and discussed possible ways ahead with the old church. To sum it up, I believe I discussed with them sort of fee for service because they've mentioned. That put down if we can put out a very general RFP and they can help amplify it to people who are interested in this sort of thing. Um, and they believe that having some like concrete avenues to. Seek out funding alongside that will help people feel comfortable in potentially leasing or owning the old church. So we discussed a potential fee for service, Brad's going to get back to us on what that would entail. He did, the only solid figure he gave me was they usually charge one hundred and forty an hour. After the base price, but he did not allude to what the initial cost would be. He doesn't think it would be like a full day at work though, so. I would assume it wouldn't, you know, break the bank, so to speak. Um, but he's going to, you know, collect some uh funding avenues. And put them in a document that we can present with a broad RFP. But they can then disperse in their circles. And hopefully drum up some interest, I know we had Ashley in here. Speaking about her potential project, which I think the whole board agreed would be a wonderful idea. But we do want to, you know, uh not want to limit our options at this point, we haven't explored a whole lot. So I'm sure we'll still be in talks with her, but we just wanted. Some more concrete ideas from people who have dealt with this sort of thing for a while. They did mention that uh most often it's like nonprofits and working with municipalities are open to the most avenues of funding. But that would require um a motivated nonprofit friends group, which we don't have. And in fact, Cameron informed me that we're back to having a committee that cannot form a forum, so. I did mention that, and I hope I'm wrong, that that is unlikely, um just due to. How we've gauged community interests over the last couple of years talking about this. So for now, I am going to go to a meetup that they have about local preservation. Just to talk to folks who are in the process of doing uh this sort of thing. That'll be December eighth, that's not to say nothing will happen in between now and then, but that's just kind of the only immediate action item we have coming out of this. Other than them, you know, putting together some numbers for us to see what we they would charge us for putting together a RFP in that document.
Yes.
Is there anything that needs to be taken care of prior to winter? Arriving, which is hard to think about with the temperature of today and yesterday, but is there anything you need to do to winterize?
All we can really do is just add more plastic behind that cardboard that's there, that was there last year. And it survived the winter. But adding a sheet of plastic might help waterproof that a little bit better. That's all I can think of, there's no water, so.
Yeah, I don't know when the last time we were in there was, but we should probably reinforce whatever is there currently. Um, but that's it for now, if anyone in the locality has, you know, interest in. Presenting an idea to us, we're certainly open to it, but um. The purpose of seeking out a sale or lease agreement is so that we can see the church. Kind of restored and rehabilitated rehabilitated, not necessarily the historic preservation, but. You know, reinforcing the existing structure, um making it work for whatever purpose they want, and that will require the money. They did mention congressionally delegated spending was being put toward a project in East Machias. But that is a bit of a larger space. That um doesn't deal with necessarily the same struggles where we have no running water, only one electric outlet. And and they have an active congregation in it, which is kind of sets them up for also additional avenues of funding. And they were able to meet the matching grave requirement. So, still plenty to be explored, but that is the update for now.
Thank you. Anything else I need to turn? All right, new business consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, I'll second that.
Right, discussion. Go through your phone key number.
Yeah, so I had mentioned the municipal center window replacement at the last meeting. Uh, signed the contract with renewal by Anderson on September twenty fifth. Um Shelley with Abcogs finishing the. Process working with the state to get everything in the LCP tracker, it looks like we're scheduled. The first or second week in December to have windows replaced. What that looks like, whether that means the town office is shut down, or they do one at a time and tent it off, we'll we'll know more as we get closer. During the Solid Waste Committee meeting, one of the, there was obviously many residents that were concerned about the swap shop. Closing and that resource being taken away from the town. We did bring up ideas such as, you know, having something to store swap shop goods in. Um, and then having them utilize the outdoors or the outside space and still running a swap shop. We did discuss, you know, future options uh as far as, you know, we'd be looking, we'd want to see, you know, a more permanent structure that uh. Meets ADA compliance and is safe. But one of the things that were mentioned was the Community Resilience Partnership, obviously. Reusing unwanted stuff falls in the line of um. The guidelines under that program and where both Buckfield and Sumner are on that or in that um. It may be a potential to. Combine, join together and 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 try to get funds to to build a swap shop. So I just included that in here for your information. Um, tax commitments done, that took place on August twenty fourth, all tax bills have been mailed. And are available on the town website, the mill rate for twenty five twenty six rose from twelve seventy five to fourteen eighty five, taxes are due November fifteenth. And May fifteenth. Tax liens will be recorded this week, we sent out thirty day notices roughly thirty days ago. Um, many have come in and paid their taxes, however, there's still many that have not. Once recorded, those property owners will have eighteen months to pay the lien and have them discharged. Uh, this year our office sent out payment reminders prior to that thirty day notice, which helped a little bit, but there's still. A few out there that will get liens. And then I'll be gone the next two days, I'll be up in Bangor at the MMA convention. Stacy's got two rescue reports in here. For August, Buckfield Rescue had forty one calls, seventeen during daytime, twenty four during nighttime. Twenty six were in Buckfield, the rest were in Hartford, Sumner, Turner and Hebron. Uh, we provided twenty three BLS calls, seventeen ALS calls and one fire standby. We requested mutual aid from Pace twice, Turner once. And then we provided mutual aid to Pace three times and Turner six times. Four five two spent most of the month at Ripley's for repairs and is now back in service, four five one is currently out of service due to the needed repairs. Obviously waiting on what comes out of the November fourth election. So we've only got one ambulance, if something does go, it does happen to four five two, uh, we won't be able to respond to any calls. So we'll have to rent an ambulance. Um, in August, we had two new members, uh, Richard Martindale is a paramedic and Gunner Monaco, who's an A E M T. Richard brings a wealth of experience, currently working full time with Falmah Fire Rescue, he located the main a few years ago from Nevada. Where he served as a paramedic in Las Vegas and Gunner joins us from Hallowell where he continues to work as an advanced D M T. Um, September calls went down. Uh, we had twenty eight calls for service, nineteen were during the day and nine were at night. Thirteen were in Buckfield, four in Hartford, eight in Sumner, two in Turner, one in Hebron. And then we provided fourteen BLS and fourteen ALS calls. We requested mutual aid from Pace twice, Turner once and Auburn once, and then we provided mutually to Pace once and Turner twice. Buckfield with the new step school year, Buckfield Rescue is excited to welcome three students participating in our academic internship program. These students will be with us throughout the school year, gaining hands on experience and develop developing valuable skills in fire and rescue. Um, and then she did mention that congratulations is in order for several of our team members who have licensed up. Paul Howard and Ben have successfully passed their national registry exams and are now A E M Ts. Sam Billings and Riley Tardif have also passed and are now officially certified D M Ts. So we talked about that in the past, I would like to see. We encourage members to level up, I think Sam's been a driver with us for. Since he was old enough to drive. Um, so he's now in the N T. Um, Fire Department. This is kind of a weird report because last month Adam had actually reported up to the date that he reported. So this only, the number of incidents from August eighteenth to the thirtieth was fourteen calls. Had two monthly meetings, six department trainings and had a hundred and fifty five hour call hours worked. The trucks had their yearly inspections, they all require some work to pass inspection. We've already, I've already proved the repairs, little things, but. New S C B A tanks from West Paris are now inspected and in service. The hoses have all been tested for the year, uh, we had four lengths that failed, but we have plenty of it, so. It's not a big deal, um, our cascade system did fail its air quality test, so we need to keep an eye on that. Because per BLS that will need a passing certification, our system's old and is no longer being manufactured. That's all I got.
Thank you, any further inspection? All those in paper?
Is that I?
You're on.
Sandra high.
Approval of the minutes from the September twenty second, twenty twenty five Select Board Meeting.
I know that we approved the minutes. Of the September twenty second, twenty twenty five Select Board Meeting.
Further discussion? Elizabeth Baker.
Delia I.
You're on.
Sandra I.
He will request for proposals twenty five twenty six, opening bid.
So you received three?
Yeah.
On the variable pricing, when you read them, only read the amount over rack price. Don't read the amount, does that make sense?
Yeah. Stand on the D.
Cameron, thank you for this uh handy dandy.
That'd be helpful.
If people haven't found that.
So the RFP did say that um. The town could select multiple vendors for heating fuel and and propane, obviously strong propane only office propane, so there wouldn't be a heating oil. So, we'll start with Dead River. Dead River gave us a fixed price per gallon of one sixty one. For propane and two sixty five for oil.
So one sixty one and?
Propane and two sixty five for oil.
Sixty five, thank you.
I'm not going to read the float price because I don't. I have questions about that because it doesn't actually tell us how many cents above red. Um, strong propane. Fixed pricing proposing a dollar forty nine a gallon delivered. Willing to offer this price for one, two or three years, like the contract is up to the town. And then the variable rate pricing, they propose thirty five cents a gallon fixed margin over cost. Uh, let's see, strong propane would supply and set tanks at all locations being serviced. Above listing, above listed pricings based on the average usage gallons of eighty three hundred dollars, which is information you get from us in the RFP. Provided by the town plus initial fill gallons, once company owned tanks are in place. Giving a final total gallon of, it says ten thousand, ten thousand gallons for the proposal. Um, the above pricing also factors in the locations of delivery and our cost to deliver to said locations. Payments are requested at the soonest town dispersment date after delivery, which is how we pay. And then they guarantee twenty four hour emergency delivery in the event of fuel run out, given that we use the top off method. Which is what we've asked for in the past. Once monthly to ensure tanks are full as opposed to looking for an optimal fill amount. So some, some companies use an optimal fill and they don't always hit it when they're supposed to, and we've had some issue for that. So that one had a lot more information than the Dead River one, but.
That sound, um, when we turn forty?
Yeah.
Started at thirty. All right, and then sale energy, which one is this, this is fixed price, so this is on. Propane. Price of one dollar forty four nine per gallon. It also says customer renewal incentive credit of two hundred and fifty dollars. If you stay with them. And then. Let me say this one, with just the fixed option. And then the heating oil is two seventy one nine, so two dollars seventy one. And nine tenths. Per gallon. Sorry, each one of their bids was different, so it was, I mean, different format, so it was.
Want to ask a question?
Yeah.
How many times do? A building. In Buckfield ran out of fuel, motion.
This building ran out once, the fire department ran out once, and then the fire, uh, sorry, Public Works complex ran out once.
Do you look for?
So the way especially propane works is they prices out, like all these are dropped off of them the last two hours because they waited for today's price. So, it would be. Prudent in my opinion to look this over and make a decision, that way I could sign one tomorrow and lock that price in. If we do go with a different supplier, the tanks are going to have to be changed here in a fire rescue. Strong did say that they would supply and set tanks. Last year, I think there was a fee associated with it, he didn't list that there's a fee this year. But he also doesn't, he doesn't offer, he doesn't offer uh oil. So we'd still need to get oil from. Somebody.
Sorry, who are we currently getting it from?
Uh, sailing. So eighty three hundred gallons is what um we used last year for propane and then uh. It's actually in the. And then twenty one hundred gallons of heating oil, we don't use a lot of heating oil because we use propane in the two biggest buildings we have. Um, and then at Public Works, the heating fuel is really only to. Eat the water or supplement when we don't have enough waste oil or if the waste oil furnace is down. Mainly the library is where we use the heating oil.
So to open up discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid from Strong. Propane. For this winter and from Dead River for heating fuel.
I'll say that.
My only. Is to make sure that there isn't a cost associated with strong placing the tanks. It doesn't seem like it was a Mercedes.
No, it says strong propane would supply and set tanks at all locations being serviced. His last year's. Uh, bid specifically said it'd be like five hundred dollars, so it it, the way this is worded, there's no cost, he's providing them and he's setting it in. Sorry, they. It was in the RFP, that the town could choose two suppliers. Uh, let me pull it up.
I'm not seeing any of the, like a, like how Strong has a twenty four hour emergency delivery. Not seeing that in sales offer. Which I'm not seeing in Dead Rivers either, but Dead River is cheaper.
Last year I put temp sensors in this building, I mean, like, I'm not so worried about that as far as like, we'll know if we're out because there's somebody in that building all the time, but here. Like you go away for a weekend and the temp sensor will go off and tell me it's forty degrees in the building, I actually have it set higher than that, but if it drops below, I think fifty five. I get notification on my phone. So I've fortunately not had it go, we, we had issues with the, the. Elec- electrical for the furnace kicking out, we've since fixed that, but so it notified me on after hours, but whenever we've run out, it's usually been. I show up in the morning and that's when I find out because it's just starting to drop. So we've been lucky in that sense that I haven't had to call anybody in the middle of the night, but.
We set it up for automatic.
Delivery on everything. And we ran out.
Right, right.
Long as. Like almost scheduled.
Yep.
We shouldn't need.
Right.
Yeah, in theory, we won't run out, I mean, it's. We shouldn't, we shouldn't have had those issues. You know, it's the year before it happened as well when we had oil. We ran out. And, I mean, this is a big building, if it drops to fifty five degrees, it takes all day to get back up to sixty five seventy, and unfortunately. This building uses a lot of heat because I have to keep the the heat up. To prevent the baseboards from freezing, as you're all well aware of, right Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah. There was forced hot air, it wouldn't be such a big deal, but when there's water leaking all over the place, it's, it's a big deal. Um, I think in, in the, okay, right here, road paving. Guess I didn't post it online, I sent it out to everybody individually. So be, uh, word maybe split one vendor for oil and a different vendor for propane. Thought that I had put something in there about if. If we are run out, that the vendor was responsible for any damages, but apparently it's not. Ideally, it shouldn't be an issue.
Of course.
Or it shouldn't be an issue, I mean, we're on automatic delivery for everything.
But we were when this was happening, right?
Correct.
Okay. I mean.
So I said ideally it should.
Yeah, right. Um. So is it in our best interest to reject these bids and put up a new RFP? Or should we just deal with it into the next year and put it on the next year's RFP?
Well, yeah, I think perhaps the honor this our use is putting that over.
I mean, I I feel comfortable with it as the way it is with whoever you decide to go with, I think the motion was what? Strong and Dead River.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
An issue this year. Next year I can make a note to make sure that I include that in there just so it's explicit and specific. Fortunately, we haven't had. The issues with the, the last burst pipe wasn't associated with us being run out. It was associated with the electrical. Which we've gotten fixed, so that shouldn't be an issue. Um, and then with the temperature sensors, they should be able to be notified in plenty of time. And if. Strong is saying that they offer twenty four hour emergency delivery. Then I guess that means I can get a hold of him to make sure that we have propane.
For a vote?
Yeah, I was wait, make sure we didn't have the other questions.
There's nothing on here about.
Talking about not weed.
All that stuff.
Alright, all those in favor, Bob?
Yeah, I.
You're right.
Sandra, I.
Any appointments?
I move that we appoint Jessica Mishell. To the Library Committee. This is a three year reappointment.
I will second.
Present discussion. All those in favor, Bob?
Sally, I.
You're right.
Sandra, I.
Thank you, Jessica.
Other business?
Um, I would like to make a motion that the Select Board Forum and Ad Hop Committee. To pursue. A new building for the swap shop.
I'll second that. Um, yes.
Um, yeah, I've, you know. Noticed that there have of course been a drummed up interest in. Um, finding a new home for the swap shop. Uh, I was hoping that we could open up some committee applications for about a month and a half and see. If we have any folks with experience in fundraising and grant writing. Um, because I think that assuming we can't rely on a community resilience grant. It's just not a promise, so. Um, if that works out, that's great, but just to explore avenues even before going after a community resilience grant will want to know. Um, what numbers we're looking at for. Uh, you know, a new structure as well as a foundation to put that on that is stable. Um, so just a committee for the purpose of getting together some numbers and feelers. Um, to explore what's possible.
Yes.
And, um, would this committee? Include both. Buckfield or be open to both Buckfields and Summer?
It would be open and I think anyone. I don't see a reason to put a town limit on it, so, um. As you know, if there were someone who just has like strong ties to Buckfield and is willing to work on such a project, but they don't. Live immediately in Buckfield and Summer, I don't see why they couldn't join either. Um. I do want to leave the uh, application period open for a little time, so maybe we revisit this. Um, at the. Let me look at my calendar. Um, perhaps like the, the first weekend in, or the first select board meeting in December, which would be the second. Assuming that doesn't really be rescheduled. We can. Uh, start approving committee appointments then. Just an idea.
Yeah, it certainly had a good turnout.
Yeah, and I'm hopeful that there are even more that, you know, maybe weren't able to ma- make it that evening, so.
Yes.
So I, I think that's a great idea, um. But as far as. Focusing the task of the Ad Pop Committee. Would it be simply to? Find the different options of a structure or? Looking at the. Financing. I have a fine because.
Yeah, you could. I think you'd be responsible to do both.
Yeah. Just so. There's this. The end goal of, of this committee is. The finance structure.
Yeah.
Um, because it difference if it's. Finance through a grant or if it's a. Nonprofit group versus.
Yep.
Or non poll taxpayer.
Absolutely.
That's awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no, the goal is to, um, at least in my opinion should be to, um. Avoid any possible tax burden, um, outside of perhaps there's an argument uh, for the money that the swap shop. Has historically saved the waste station, but it's a money saving project too. So if we. And I think it's, um, a good enough cause and a strong enough cause that. There are funding opportunities out there that can fulfill the need without us, you know, potentially having to ask the taxpayers. But that's something to be explored by the committee.
Hey, front of discussion here? All those in favor, Bob?
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you, everyone.
What are doing, Sandra?
Any other, other business?
Not weed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we need to bring it up in a public forum, but I think we. Um. Is the not weed bad just back here in like spots on the railroad bed? Or I mean, I know it's kind of a little bit everywhere. We maybe like tarp it. Um. When the leaves drop. Mow it down, tarp it, leave it over winter and.
This one's but the stuff behind the town office. So there was a concern a- about not weed. The stuff that's behind the town office and I guess there's some on the river bed. And it has to be cut and then chemically treated. Well, I mean, we've, we've cut this, we usually cut this every couple of years and then it just comes back and. I mean, we had it out front. You can still see some of it popping up out front.
Yeah.
Um.
No, it's something that. From my understanding needs to be trimmed back with multiple times a year to really battle it. Because yeah.
Yeah. And it, I mean, it's, it'll be quite the project because we dug all this up and it's still coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. I don't think our municipal budget has the funding to do it this year with the windows coming and what we have to contribute to that. But it. Be something that we explore in subsequent budgets. I mean, right now, the only thing I do is. Send Public Works over there with the mulch head and chop it down, but. If anything, that makes it worse.
What is that? Little spruce?
It looks like bamboo.
Looks like bamboo.
Yeah.
There's some of it on the side of Gammon Road, like it's all Hartford's got a bunch of it on Bear Pond Road.
It makes it pickles. But that's not the only useful thing to do with it. Um, no, it's, it's pervasive for sure, but. If we have any. Scraps of tarp hanging around, maybe we can lay it out over the, I, I haven't seen exactly how. Big the patches back here.
That's probably, that's probably close to an acre of it.
Okay.
That's a lot of tars.
It's a lot of tar. Yeah, okay, maybe we don't have. No action, I don't.
Alright.
Hot gossip.
Yeah. Bad weed troubles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why not?
Alright, uh, any other business? Public comment?
Nope, there's Judy's hand.
Judy, yeah.
Unmute yourself.
I could, I couldn't resist. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The swap shop is really important to the town. You can't imagine how people are talking about it. And you know what? It does save money. Uh, I, I watched a, oh, a month ago, a huge sofa go into the over bin. You know, because the swap shop was closed. And it was a perfectly good sofa. Um, there's a lot of heavy stuff and the other problem is that if it's not available, some people may just choose to drop things along the roadside or in the woods. I think it's a real, it's a commu- it, it's a community gathering place and it's also a mother money saver, I think for Buckfield.
Absolutely. I, I, I do think that. You know, I, I'll speak for myself, but I also don't think about any on the board. Anyone here on the board can deny that. Um, but it's just the structure that it was in, um. You know, was too much of a hazard. So I think that that was unavoidable, but I'm hoping that. Um, like you said, that we can drum up enough interest and transform that into real action. Um, uh, we're gonna keep the Facebook group open. People are welcome to. Post bulky items that they're looking to get rid of. Um, on that and sort of organize a pickup situation similar to other local. Um. Give it away for free groups, which I know there's another one for the. Buckfield Hartford Summer Canton Community, I believe. Um, so either of those avenues are still open. Um. As Cameron mentioned, we discussed doing like an outdoor swap shop, but. That was something that Sarah tried to do with the, um, at the time present pool of volunteers. When the swap shop was first closed and there just wasn't enough volunteer interest, um. Which is fine because you know, people's got things to do with their summer and such, but. Now that we're heading into sort of inclement weather season, I would expect. Um, to be exploring that avenue at least until next.
That would be too cold.
Yeah. Yeah. But for now, yeah, uh, Helping Hearts of Maine is a great resource just over the hill. Um, going into Norway, it's right next to the big brown self-storage. Uh, business, um, and then yeah, we'll keep that group open and I know there's another.
Usable clothes can still be dropped off at the. Bin at the transfer station.
Yeah, we still have an apparel impact bin in the same location, um, it's white. Uh, with a red and black decal on it, so you can drop clothes off there. To be picked up, um. And I have no other point, but I've lost it. Um, oh, yes, I have a sort of survey that I will publish on, um. The Facebook group and I'll have Cam share it to our Facebook page, so it ends up on the town website as well. Uh, just to kind of get a gauge of. People who would be interested in how they would be able to contribute to the cause.
Thank you, Judy.
Actually, hold on. I got one more thing and it was because Judy had brought it up there today.
Alright, so we.
I hope it's working. Can you hear me, Judy? Okay, she can.
Yes, I can hear you.
So we had talked about communications in the town and I've posted a few things online. I've shared it. We've got, I think, a hundred and thirty people signed up for the town's mailing list, which can be email and text message. Um. But Judy had brought up the concern that a lot of people aren't online and they don't get those notifications, so. Uh. We do have a text to join for the email list and the, and the text messaging service. So if residents want to be a part of that, they can text the word join and their email address. To five one five. Five one five. Two four five nine. And I'll try to get something out on the sign as well, so when people drive by, they see it, but, um. That will get them signed up so that we can start utilizing that service more to push out information about elections and public hearings and road closures and. Whatever else we need to use it for, um. So I just wanted to put that out there because I did have a conversation with Judy and that was one of her concerns. And I know most people have a cell phone of some sort that can get basic text messages. So. That is available if anybody wants to join.
Do you have pictures?
I've got them, I've got them on the counter at the town office, um.
So I fix someone up for the meeting and send them those.
Yeah, because I don't think it's gonna be able to pick this up. Oh, wait, it will. So I'll hold it there for a second. Don't mind me, I'm shaky. Can you read that, Judy?
Uh, not there, I can, I, my eyes aren't that great. I see text. Um.
They can pause it on the recording.
I don't know, I do see five one five, I, I saw the number.
Okay. While on the recording, that'll, that'll be on Facebook and YouTube, it'll, I'll pause it up, I'll put more inform- I'll push it out there more. But I've got it hanging up on the board here and I've got flyers here too, so if people want to do it, they can. So spread the word, Judy.
I'll do.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else? Any other public comments?
A reminder about the public hearing on the twenty first.
Oh, yeah. Public hearing on the twenty first of times.
Six thirty. It'll go over the warrant, including the withdrawal petition or the petition to withdraw. Um. The election of the selectmen for the remainder of that. Seven month term. Um, the overage in public safety. Uh, the question asking if the town wants to authorize us to purchase a new ambulance and was there something else? Can't think of it off the top of my head, but there's a bunch of items there that will be discussed that night.
Yes.
Um, perhaps we could invite. Candidates to. Come and speak if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Those people who are.
That'd be great, yeah.
Absolutely.
Um.
I could reach out to Joanne and Kyle, see if they. Want to come.
If they want to.
Yep.
Or a requirement, but.
Yeah.
Or at least write something up.
Yeah.
Whatever it is they want to do, people had questions.
Alright, we're all set? Alright, so I'll make a motion. We adjourn at seven twenty Eastern.
A second, Doc?
All those in favor? Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, Judy.
Good night.